All right, the time is four thirty P M and we will call the meeting of the Skagit County Public Utility District Order. And at this time, I'd ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so at this time, I would ask any members of the public who are here in the Aqua Room tonight to step to the podium and state your name and city of residence if you are wishing to offer public comments.
All right, my name is Jennifer. I live in Mount Vernon, Washington. I'm here representing the Skagit Drainage and Irrigation District Consortium on behalf of the districts fifteen and twenty-two. I have a memo for you guys, that's okay. George.
Yeah, I need to actually. Thank you, Shannon.
So I can just go through this real quick. Um. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak. So in follow-up to the conversation that we had a week ago regarding emergency drought transfers, if in fact an emergency drought is declared, um, we thought of developing and proposing a methodology for you to consider as it pertains to the cost per acre foot of water. And I think just to kick this off, um, we have reviewed the P U D memo that was part of the record that was put online last night. And this methodology is a little bit different. And for the intensive today, we'd really just like to focus on the two thousand and twenty-three drought conversation and have more detailed conversations moving forward this fall. Um, so our proposed methodology, there's a couple of simple steps. Step number one eligibility. This is consistent with the past where public entities would be eligible for the transfers, public entities with existing water rights. And so really clear, this isn't sort of an open market situation. It's our understanding that the water that P U D has water rights to would not be put to a good use, but beneficial use for the purposes of ag. And so we don't, we don't understand that we're not competing with others for this water. And I think that presentation Judy reservoirs full, not asking anybody to curtail. So step number two was how to determine the value of non-potable water. So we're not talking about piped water, not treated water, nothing that comes from the P U D system. Just simply the transfer of the water to the downstream districts. So P U D wouldn't be involved in diverting the water or treating it or delivering it. So we're just trying to get at the value of the water. And so on page two, I reached out to several irrigation districts in the state of Washington. They're listed, South Columbia Irrigation District, Rosa, East Columbia, Wenatchee, Natchezilla, and Quincy, Columbia. And just asked them what their customer rate is per acre foot. There are some calculations to change the units. Um, but you'll see that these values um per acre foot of the water delivered are significantly lower than the estimate that's provided in your briefing memo. I think part of the explanation for this is that these are just customer rates and part of what I felt like was summarized in the table that you reviewed were market rates in a competitive Eastern Washington market. Some of those were for drought, some of those were old. And I feel like um it is difficult to come up with a price per acre of just the value of the water because there are so many other things that are involved and so much variability. And so um that being said, sort of going back to my original statement, we'd like to have a clean slate in September when we talk about a long-term rate, if that's the way we decide to go. So for the purposes of our methodology, we just averaged um those irrigation districts. Um, just again, the base rate for customers and came up with a rate of fifty dollars and thirty-four cents. Um, we believe this is a fair value and meets the intent raised by Commissioner Miller about needing a defendable methodology. The third step that we used was talking about how to adjust that average rate for Skagit specific considerations. So we had heard last week that you had wanted a fifteen hundred dollar administrative fee. We believe that that seems reasonable and would be willing to pay for it, given the staff time involved with the drought declarations. But might be somewhat duplicative. And so the other thing that we were considering is the costs of operations, maintenance of the distribution system, capital improvement projects. These types of things, based on our understanding, would have been built into the irrigation districts that we contacted. And we understand there's value, obviously, in P U D having buildings and computers and and overhead and administration. And I think the point to make here is that those things are a little bit unknown at this time and how they relate to the value of the water, if the P U D infrastructure is not being used to manage it. And then the third thing that we were considering and discussed quite at length at the last meeting was the title conditions. It's our understanding that P U D um would be applying the title conditions to the to the drought transfers in two thousand and twenty-three. And so the last table just sort of is a proposal for how we would um adjust that average base rate. Um, there'd be a sixty percent reduction in administration overhead and capital costs. The transfers don't cause any wear and tear on your system. Um, and that's our understanding. And that some of the administrative stuff is duplicative if you're talking about a fifteen hundred dollar administrative fee. And then a fifty percent reduction on that value due to the title conditions that would allow the districts to only pump half of the day. So the proposed value based on this methodology is lower than what was in your recommended packet. We're just asking that you consider the methodology and consider the value as you're deliberating tonight. Uh, there was one other thing um that we um were a little bit unclear about, and that was the total volume that we're talking about for the duration of the transfer. Both districts were estimating um up to three hundred and fifteen acre feet. And that's quite a bit more than what was in your packet for the example, district fifteen. Um, I emailed Bill, I'm hoping he has sleuthed out um an answer to that question. And um that's the end of my testimony, and I appreciate your time and your dedication to this issue. Thanks.
For in the interest of getting of the meeting, we're gonna, this is the audience comments, so we may have questions or something. Um, yes, just let you go. We get to think and talk, and then we may, because our privileges commissioners get to ask questions, and that's probably, I think, that we're looking forward to. So if you don't ask questions now, it's not because we don't have questions, we're just trying to be procedurally accurate.
My name is Tony Wiseman, I live in Burlington, and I'm a farmer here in Skagit County. Thank you for your interest and willingness to help the ever-present and vitally important ag community here in our beautifully ag-based Skagit County. Transferring your unused water so that it can be put to beneficial use is a vital aspect of our success this year amidst this long dry spell. I strongly urge you as commissioners who serve the public as elected officials to consider the proposals before you regarding the cost of P U D water pumped directly out of the river for agriculture irrigation purposes and to choose the option that is the lowest cost to the end user. Understanding, if I understand correctly, the proposal by the ag community that Jenna just handed you recommends ten dollars per acre foot of water as a charge for this transferred water right. I understand the memo from P U D staff recommending twenty dollar, twenty-five dollars per acre foot. The revenue from ten dollars per acre foot on a total of three hundred acre feet of transfer water is three thousand dollars. The revenue from twenty-five dollars per acre foot on a total of three hundred acre feet of transferable water is seventy-five hundred dollars. I seriously doubt that either of those two numbers is meaningful in the scheme of the thirty-one million dollars of revenue budgeted for the P U D in two thousand and twenty-three. However, to us as farmers, three thousand or seven thousand five hundred is a lot of money that's not in our budgets. With the increased costs of all of our farming inputs, even these numbers are meaningful. Please consider representing your agricultural constituency well by choosing to charge the lower of the options. We're in serious drought here in Skagit County. We're in serious trouble as farmers here in Skagit County because of the lack of water. Both issues are leading to a scenario which will make it difficult for us farmers to have any shot at a good year. The weather has been so warm and so dry that our crops are showing serious signs of stress. Some crops have already failed. We need your help. I'm asking you to please choose the least costly option for us farmers. Thank you for your consideration of my point.
Afternoon. I'm Dale Reagan, I live in the city of Mount Vernon, I'm a P U D customer and you're next door neighbor. I did some digging into financial information and found that the most current audited information from P U D is twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. So I don't know when twenty-one becomes posted on the internet, which would be considered more current. Twenty-two, I understand now. Auditors don't get that close to reality, but two thousand and twenty seemed to me to be a surprise that that was the last audited financial information, so.
Okay, so is that it?
When he said he was gonna be remote, he's trying to turn the water ski and hold the phone and everything.
Is is that editing the room?
If he can hear us, we should just, yeah, leave a call for just coming.
You bet. Uh, in the interest of the technology, uh, George, can you see if there's any?
Yeah, it's like all the online comments, if you're watching online, raise, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Have you seen?
Nobody's raising their hand.
All right. All right, Joe, so there's no online comments and we have exhausted comments in the room so far.
I feel like you can hear us, but.
Maybe some kind of lie.
Yeah, all right. So.
So moving on from audience comments, we have a new business. Where do we introduce the new business?
Yes, I've got um few notes and comments to go over, so um. See, okay, so cover some emails here. Uh, just as reflected on kind of what's happened the last week. So we were here a week ago uh with this item to try and set an administration fee and a water rate fee on any temporary water rate transfers uh to districts fifteen and twenty-two in the event that a emergency drought is declared. So right before the meeting, that four twenty-one, I got an email from Rhea Burns. And so there's a group of people called the Executive Water Emergency Committee that held their meeting in Olympia this afternoon. And so their job is to recommend to the governor whether a drought should be declared. And so that is going to be their recommendation after their meeting today. So they're gonna go, just based on her email, they're going to follow up, brief the governor tomorrow. And if there is, he had the option of ignoring the recommendation, but I don't think he does historically. And if he accepts a recommendation, the drought would go into effect Monday, the twenty-fourth. So that's as much as we know right now, they're recommending that drought be declared. Um, okay, so just to bring us up to date, um a little bit of history. So there's been three droughts declared in the past eight years. They're in two thousand and fifteen, twenty nineteen, and two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, this year should be the fourth. Um, in each of those drought years, the schedule P U D has agreed to transfer temporarily water rights because of the drought emergency. And obviously, we're all here because we're willing to consider a similar transfer this year as well. Um, but just to, we're gonna get into the financial information. Uh, it's happening more often, and we haven't taken the time in previous years to recover any costs related to uh the work that is done or for the value of the water is being transferred. And so that's what we're trying to do now. And so that's what drags us out a little bit now, our second week talking about this. Um, so Mark Hansik, our engineering manager, Bill Truman's our engineering supervisor, both of them and I have had numerous discussions in the past week. And we've come to a recommendation for the board, which is what you all read in the packet. So let's get into the details of all those recommendations, but I'd like to just take a moment to explain kind of the philosophy and and everything about it, uh, just before we get there. So the admin fee. So at our last meeting, we explained about the direct staff costs related to completing the interlocal agreement and the transfer application to ecology. I don't recall that there is any real disagreements about the admin fee. Uh, so today, in the in the packet, we're still recommending the same amount as fifteen hundred dollars in the admin fee. So I think, you know, we can talk about all that, but that's just what we put in the recommendation. In terms of the water rate, so um last week, we had a lot of discussion about the water rate and our biggest thing is going back to what Commissioner Miller was saying and what our council was saying as well. Um, we need to set a rate for the water that is defendable on the calculation. So there's a lot of different ways of coming to that. Um, you know, Jenny made, had did some research, made some phone calls, got some information. We did a similar thing with our consultant aspect consulting. They're heavily involved in a lot of this kind of work all over the state. We've got some information from them as well. Both of those are two different data sets. And it's market information. And so I think we need to treat it as such. It's not complete. It's not exactly comparable to what goes on in Skagit County, and we acknowledge that. Uh, so you can read the memo that's in our packet. It's just a reference. It's a reference point. It doesn't mean we don't think that we should lean on the market information. Um, market rates for anything, even including water, are subjective. They're dependent on the local conditions. There's local influences. There's a lot of different things to go into it. Too many unknowns and influences for an accurate comparison to be made. I think we made that point clear last week. Skagit Valley is unique. It has its own market. We haven't established that market yet. Um, so without having the market, we have to find a cost for the water. And unfortunately, our financial systems, I'll address your comment later, Dale. Um, our financial systems aren't set up to track expenses for non-potable, non-piped water. We just don't track to that level because we don't do it. That's not what we, how we extract the information, how we track the information. So we can't get an actual cost for that water. So then we have to make a comparison. So this is what is in the memo. There are other projects that we have, developer projects, other capital projects. When we track expenses or when we deal with those kind of projects, tracking expenses is also challenged. But we assign an overhead, an administrative overhead expense of six percent. It it's, I don't think it's a duplicate when you look at the admin fee to what our overhead rates are. We deal with a lot of different kinds of projects. And the overhead rate just accounts for keeping the lights on and having the availability to do work. The admin fee is the specific cost of doing that work. The overhead rate is just all of us being here and us being able to to do that work. So utilities, maintenance, taxes, computers, all of that kind of stuff. That's what's built into that overhead rate. And if I was to have to defend this to a state auditor, whether it's completely correct or partially correct, I don't know, you worded this last week, Pete, but um this is how I would explain it. There's a trail of this. There's a history of how we come to these expense calculations. And that is what I am most comfortable in recommending as far as a cost for the water. So we're at the six percent. So that's our philosophy behind not using the market. We don't have a market. We're trying to assign a cost to it. So that's where we get the six percent. Then you look at the rate. Um, we have an egg rate in our rate schedule. Obviously, it's piped water, it's treated water. It's a higher rate. It's three dollars and seventy-one cents per unit, which equates to over sixteen hundred dollars an acre foot. So that is an established rate. We don't have a different rate to use as a starting point, so we use that. If you apply our six percent overhead factor on the sixteen hundred dollars, you come to about ninety-seven dollars an acre foot. For simplicity, I rounded that to a hundred. That is our attempt at applying a cost to the value of the water that we're looking at transferring. But then there are things to consider. We acknowledge that there's restrictions on pumping, can only pump twelve hours a day, so you should reduce that by half because you can only pump half the day. So that's where you guys can all follow the math, I'm sure. You take the hundred dollars and you reduce it by fifty percent, you get the fifty dollars an acre foot. So in my mind, that's the value, right? It's it's fifty dollars an acre foot. And like was said, this wasn't planned for expenses, this wasn't anticipated. So it should be phased in. So this is the slight difference between, I guess, what we're proposing and what was discussed. We'd like to fade this in over two years. We'd like to address this issue now and also for next year so that we don't have to do this again, so that we can have the long-term conversations and it buys us time to have those. Again, the recommendation is to set a rate to phase it in, which ours was half, half of what we calculated, twenty-five. The full rate next year of fifty and have a longer term solution in place for two thousand and twenty-five. So we're, we spent a lot of time in the last few weeks trying to address this issue, and it's not efficient. We don't want to do this again and to just hoping that in the next six months, we can come to an agreement, I think is a little optimistic. We think buying another year is going to be better for us to look at two thousand and twenty-five to establish what we're gonna do. So that's the recommendation that's in the memo. Um, the long-term solution idea is in the memo. We don't have to talk about that. That's just an idea. We don't need to make any decisions related to that. It was just so you can think about what we were considering, and then those discussions will start this fall. So that's my explanation of the memo and turn it back over.
Very good. Joe, are you able to?
Yeah, so do we want to go ahead and go into a discussion now on this? Um, thoughts on the memo versus what was presented um from Jenna here tonight?
Do you want to kick off just because you're remote?
Can you guys hear me?
So if you want to, uh,
well, yeah. I was talking happily, um, especially since the kind of rush of having to have this all put together before droughts declared, I really am not comfortable with any sort of conversations about two thousand and twenty-four. Um, I would prefer to discuss that further when we can come to an agreement on methodology of determining rates. Um, I think that should be a discussion we have together with the districts, not necessarily just a one-way conversation coming from either direction. Um, I think we need to work with our farming community, not against them. Um, it is really, I mean, the identity of Skagit County is our farmland and the quality of our lives here really are determined by the quality of our farms. So um I'm not ready to have a conversation about next year. I would really like to further our conversation and come together on discussing the methodology and coming to an agreement for next year sometime this fall. Um, but again, I think that's gonna be, it's gonna be a long conversation and anything worth doing is worth doing right. Um, so that's part one. Part two, I also don't agree on the dollar amount um put forward by the P U D. Uh, again, I think there's a lot of unknowns at this time. And I don't want a situation in which we determine that there would be a incidence of backsliding. So say we determined down the road that twenty-five dollars is too much, but we've already charged it once. Well, we've already justified that twenty-five dollars is enough for that water. And now we've determined now we have a different methodology that says fifteen dollars is the actual round amount. I'd rather say we had a justification that said that ten dollars was a fair value for this water. And if we determine that fifteen to twenty-five in the future is a better number, then we can go that direction moving forward. So I'm happy with methodology put forth by the drainage districts, uh, and then until we can come to a uh better, more robust way for calculation sake, then we can have that conversation in the fall to determine what two thousand and twenty-four will bring forward for us and then continue to have that long-term conversation, maybe with a five-year agreement or what have you moving forward. But that is definitely not what I want to talk about tonight. I want to talk about the drought, getting them water now and moving forward.
Joey there?
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me now?
Can you just text him? Yes. Okay.
He's not understanding that.
No, I I get it now. Um, so my thinking here was, um, I think what we talked about um last week was taking the ninety-seven, going sixty percent of that. Um, and then um I think using George, George's methodology from there. Um, so I guess it'd be the sixty percent of the twenty-five as we've proposed it. And I'm fine just doing a one year for now. Um, if that's the direction we want to go, but that's, that's my line of thinking at this point.
Percent of twenty-five dollars, is that what you're saying? So that would be like twelve dollars, eleven dollars?
Roughly, yes. And I think that's I think that's still defendable. Um, with the sixty percent, we're just saying that we're charging them, you know, this is what we do for an egg rate. So um, I think that was kind of left out of the proposal from staff for tonight.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
The the sixty percent that we talked about last week was the comparison of the egg rate to the full rate. So in in the memo, we started with the egg rate. We didn't start with the full rate. So applying the sixty percent factor is double counting it. So if you're gonna apply the sixty percent factor, you should theoretically start at the higher rate.
Okay. To do, um, but I don't love that it it's that we're over the barrel on it. Um, and uh, I appreciate that we want to get, we want, do want to get this right. I think as a commission, we are absolutely dedicated putting this water to work. Um, and putting it to work in a way that is is optimally beneficial. Um, it, these are, these are it the financial loss that would be associated with not doing something is just not something that any of us want to deal with, uh, and you certainly don't. So that we want to do this is 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 absolute. Um, I have a concern with the precedent and and Commissioner Hamburg brought that up about if we on the third largest river system on the West Coast decide that the non-potable value of an acre foot is ten dollars. I'm not sure what that, I don't want national attention on this. I want you to get water. I want us to maintain the 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 rate and so that we can go about the business of being a municipally-owned water company. That's the good news, because if we weren't, if this were publicly traded company, we'd be trying to maximize this water rate and we wouldn't be having this conversation. And that's not what we're trying to do because it is a municipally-owned uh and governed water company. That's the good news here. Uh, so all of that, I guess, all of that being said, is my concern is with with the precedent. I love that we have now two algebra equations that are going to get us that I think I I feel are are defensible. Um, and it's now we're to the point of numbers in, numbers out. Um, I do agree that the numbers outs coming out of this meeting needed as low as possible to create okay, that makes sense. To do, um, but I don't love that it it's that we're over the barrel on it. Um, and uh, I appreciate that we want to get, we want, do want to get this right. I think as a commission, we are absolutely dedicated putting this water to work. Um, and putting it to work in a way that is is optimally beneficial. Um, it, these are, these are it the financial loss that would be associated with not doing something is just not something that any of us want to deal with, uh, and you certainly don't. So that we want to do this is 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 absolute. Um, I have a concern with the precedent and and Commissioner Hamburg brought that up about if we on the third largest river system on the West Coast decide that the non-potable value of an acre foot is ten dollars. I'm not sure what that, I don't want national attention on this. I want you to get water. I want us to maintain the 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 rate and so that we can go about the business of being a municipally-owned water company. That's the good news, because if we weren't, if this were a publicly traded company, we'd be trying to maximize this water rate and we wouldn't be having this conversation. And that's not what we're trying to do because it is a municipally-owned uh and governed water company. That's the good news here. Uh, so all of that, I guess, all of that being said, is my concern is with with the precedent. I love that we have now two algebra equations that are going to get us that I think I I feel are are defensible. Um, and it's now we're to the point of numbers in, numbers out. Um, I do agree that the numbers outs coming out of this meeting needed as low as possible to create. Coming out of this meeting needed as low as possible to create. Space to make a really good long term decision, I think that's, that's the policy decision that we're gonna make that is defensible from a policy perspective. Creates planning opportunities and certainty for irrigators, that's the other thing that we want to do is, is to create as a, as a water company, we want, we want to sell water. And as George stated, we've not sold non potable water before, so you have to excuse us and our inelegance of getting there, um, and. The urgency of, associated with that. And so, um. I. I do. I, I, I just, it's. My concern again is, is with the precedent, we cannot say that in one of the most hotly, I'm just saying, in, in, in. An area where water is hotly contested. We turn around and say, here's what a non potable rate is worth. Um, that, and it's, it doesn't hit. A threshold of, uh. Defensive, I mean, the math is there. Is that a number that then? There's a, there, therein lies attention, please, yeah, now we can have a conversation, so please, if you, I, I, you know.
Concerns, which is why we had an eligibility as our. One of our steps, right, and yet, so that we were acknowledging that waters are a valuable resource in this watershed and in. The west coast, and I think the other question I had was when the value was zero, did you have a lot of other people reaching out to the P U D trying to get? The water. For the purposes of. What we're talking about today, like what, what did you experience in twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one? Just, um, I'm just kind of curious, like, it, it doesn't seem like. My understanding is that, you know, everyone kind of under, understood why it was happening. Why it was associated with the drought and I think the risk really is in the longer term. Agreement and that is where I think some caution is definitely warranted. Uh, we, we, we've talked a lot about that, wanting to make sure that we really understand how this goes forward. So I had.
No, no, thank you, please.
We've had, I know. One instance where somebody's come to ask for. Purchasing some water rights from us, but, but it's just not, people understand it's not available, so I don't think it's the people ever thought to come and ask us for it. So just from that perspective. And then what somebody's willing to pay is, yeah, it's subjective. I think all the. You know, the, the average. That was in the memo that we had in our packet is a subset of information. Um, the, the average in the data that's in here is a subset, like it's hard to take. Usually when you're doing. Uh, a study and you take an average of something, you have all the data. I don't think we have all the data, so you know, it'd be hard for me to defend. Saying, well, we got the average, how do you know you have all the data?
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head, this isn't, I, I think, not only are we glad that we're having this conversation, we're also. Couraged and, and would encourage further conversation with irrigators, um, that. Want to buy this water. And so I think that's a part I. I, I honestly, if it weren't for ours or somebody else, well, that we don't really do that, it's easy to say in, in. Companies like ours, and like, well, we don't really sell our non potable water, right? Unless it's to farmers. Uh, in which case it today has required an emergency, right, where that, of course, we would love to get out of that, because that creates some flexibility as a customer that you would have that we currently don't have underneath this, uh, interlocal. Which is further, let's have this conversation when we're not over the barrel. Um, type, type things, so I think there's benefits to be had from further, you know, the conversations, uh, regarding this, because there are some constraints that are, and, and is, I was going through the, are we? By the interlocal constrained to hundred and fifty acre feet per district, or is that?
No, there's, um. We're constrained by the instantaneous quantity of water that is able to be pumped, so our water rights are based on the Q I.
Okay.
And so. This is, Bill did run through more calculations, you can go through them in detail if you want to get to, but there are more picker acre feet. Acre feet available. If the transfer started sooner. So, but it's limited by the Q I. So volumes are available.
What is instantaneous?
It's a total of sixty five hundred gallons per minute. And so current, well, actually in past years, we've had it split four thousand gallons a minute for. District fifteen and twenty five hundred for twenty two, I. May, may get that wrong, but it combined it was sixty five. So it can be divided differently. That's an option too, but if you just take the instantaneous quantity and. Multiply it out by an estimate of how many days you need it, you'll come up with an acre foot, which. We ran out as. Four hundred. Three hundred, so it, there's quantity available. That, that shouldn't be the issue. It's the, it's the instantaneous pumping that the pumps are taking. But that's what they've been. That's what we've been living under for previous droughts anyway, so that shouldn't be an issue.
Nothing to add at this point.
Okay. That's good. I know, it, I mean, how do you feel about the testament, I mean. Uh, Joe, I mean, that, that's, that's the part that I just, as you, as you mentioned, like if we, if we overshoot, if we undershoot, if we, I mean, that, that is the. I love that we've got dueling experts, functionally dueling experts, right, there's the, but the math, there's two different math sets, two different sets of data. Um, what we come out with here will, whether we say it's simpler than not, set a precedent.
Yeah, I think, I think the question is. The goal, what is our goal right now, our goal is to get farmers water in a drought situation and have a defensible way in which we calculated. A dollar amount that didn't break the farmers back and didn't. Break our back from litigation, which whoever will be that, but. In my mind at this point is they need water. Drought condition to be determined by Monday, hopefully, and. We can work on. The nitty gritty details then, I mean, I appreciate the work that's been slipped forward here, but. There are still so many. Portions that have not been accounted for, um, as far as, because it's never been done before and I don't want to rush it. I, I do think this is worth. Being done correctly and I don't think that that can be done correctly without experts from both sides and the farmers at the table and. And actually having a collaborative conversation about it, so. That's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Going forward. George wants you to say it, I'm late, so Joe can hear it. Going forward, we're gonna need. Uh, a methodology that's sensitive to the actual costs of water running by. I don't think we know enough at this point to give a accurate value of that. What we can't do is pluck a number out of the air. In a way that looks arbitrary and capricious or is arbitrary capricious, because that's, we, we can't. As a public agency, that's our. Uh, demarcation, so you have to have some defensible. Methodology for the short term. Um, I, I think you can craft, um. A methodology out of the, the suggestions that we have here today, you know, on a temporary basis with the understanding that we're going to. Create a more sensitive methodology. Going forward and so, and, uh, that's a conversation for when we are not over the barrel and when we, um. Uh, just. Have a little bit more brainstorming about what factors need to go into that calculation. But in the meantime, the. You know, we're in an emergency situation, we're going to be judged by essentially that. Idea that we're in an emergency declaration, we, we can only work with what we have. So let's come up with a methodology that's fair, um, that doesn't, um. You know, bury the, uh, the agriculture community in cost right now, but that also. Uh, is defensible when we're talking to an auditor about why we let all this water go by.
Yeah, that is my, the, the concern is that there's. Because we have the interlo, interlocal side we got here, so that there's no accusation of unfair dealing. Right, this isn't, this isn't, hey, I know the farmers are, we, we want, you know, this is this, so because they're, because it is public. It is an offering, it is approachable to anyone who has a similar interest in this water, right, which at which point we can refuse or accept. Now, we have. In an emergency established. A rate. And a process that is defensible and repeatable as necessary without any rear end to wheel. That's a win for me, again, we're putting the water to work. The district is not losing money on this, other than I think the. Fifteen hundred dollars is, is probably. What we spent on consultant, but we won't have to do that anymore. So, um.
Well, I think that's my other concern about comparing it to our current rate structure too, is that our current rate structure, I mean, you can say an admin. You know, we have this fifteen hundred dollar admin fee and then we're using the six percent administrative. Charge as an additional administrative, you know, it, it just seems as though we're trying to extract. Numbers that don't exist. From rates that are not applicable to what we're talking about, so I also in. In that conversation, feel more comfortable with going with. You know, what are base rates for a similar drainage, you know, for, for a similar. Product. And saying that we want, we would rather compare to that product than put ourselves in a hole by trying to, to. Fit a square peg through a round hole with what we're trying to deliver as treated water, so there may be a rate study, which. I gladly would be excited for us to go down the rate study route with. Untreated ag rates, you know, I mean. That. Guarantee you, they will not look at our numbers whatsoever. When they go down that route.
I'm certainly not gonna argue against a race. Context, we're breaking new ground and, and, uh, and having a rate study is, uh, is fully justifiable and also. Um, would give us more cover essentially. The nu, the number we come up with is, is. There's an admin factor to it, but then there's also a value of the water, the water does have a value, so you need to be sensitive.
Don't you miss anything on your end?
No, I don't really have much to add, but, um. I, I think meeting somewhere in the middle on this, because it's, I mean, we're, we're kind of in uncharted territory here and it came together pretty quick. You know, if there's a way that we could. Do something that, you know, if we're just going with one year. You know, and say that this is the first year. And we, you know, we estimate that it's fifty dollars an acre foot. But. You know, if this were a longer agreement, we're gonna phase it in over time, so maybe it's a. It's discounted back, um, like this was gonna be a four year agreement, but it's not. Um, you know, I, I know George proposed the fifty percent, but maybe we discount it more. And then in the interim, do some sort of rate study.
For the discussion, are you? Knocked out?
Whatever that middle ground may be, I don't know. I just don't, I, again, I, I am very. Cautious to relating these rates to our own. That I, I. It concerns me a little bit.
Let me make a comment.
Please, don't. So maybe a little reaction, middle ground is not based on anything. So the P U D. Um, proposal, I think is a big data set of a bunch of information that is not really exactly what we're trying to do, if, if, as Jenna noted. There's information all the way back from twenty. Two thousand and one, I think, it's can be ancient all the way up to last year, that's not ancient, but a long time ago, it's like last year. It's also a completely different circumstance. So in my mind, that, that basis is kind of out there and to George's point earlier about this, the, the ninety five dollar number. That water is gonna be saltwater in. Forty minutes from where it goes by, where we're trying, where we need to pump it there, so we don't really understand the value, so I don't think using six percent. Of an administr, using a six percent administrative fee based on, to me, those numbers, we, those numbers aren't hard numbers, I think the numbers that the consortium gave. Is actual numbers based on two thousand and twenty three water rates in viable. Real time irrigation districts in eastern Washington, and, and in my opinion. That's the closest we have right now in the timeframe that was given, or that we had to work with to get actual water rate studies. To, in my, the way I see that, that's the most accurate in the short amount of time we had. It's not applying a percentage of another number. It's, this is what we're charging, we, they were added up, found the average and then deducted for, as Jenna pointed out. You know, no canal system, no irrigation district overhead management fees, not two thousand ditch riders. As they're called in eastern Washington, driving around, turning gates, open and close, none of that infrastructure, it's just the water. So it was discounted at sixty five percent discounted and then fifty percent of that because we can't pump twenty four hours a day. And quite honestly, that's really one of the biggest killers we're faced with is. Having to deal with that title influencing, so I think the position that was, the, 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 um, point that was position that was presented by the consortium is really pretty hard numbers. So I, again, I would just urge you to consider. You know, going with the lowest cost, there's really no reason to compromise here in my mind or find the middle ground, it's straightforward math. It keeps the cost low and it helps the precedence problem in the future, gives runway for something else that might occur. Yeah, I'll be open up and maybe we can talk about this, because you and I did talk about this, it's a volume, you said in the basin, they're using five or six times more water, potentially five to six times more. Water acre feet, so if they're charging lower, the overall. Transfer of that value is, that, that's, that's the one in my mind, there's.
Paying fifteen hundred dollars upfront for an admin fee. Those, that admin fee built in to their rates.
Yeah, in eastern Washington, right, they're just, they're just buying water on a per acre basis through these long term contracts that were assessed to the land when Grand Coulee Dam was. It's a lot of that, I, I. I don't really think it's the best way to do it, I just think it's the best way to do it that we have right now. It's a totally different situation, it's, it's apples and oranges. You know, it, it takes. Thirty two to thirty eight inches of water on an acre to grow a crop of potatoes in eastern Washington. So it takes over there in a, you know, full month sea season, the amount of rainwater that we get on an annual basis here, we don't need that much water. To grow our crops here, but we do need water. We just need it in a certain window of time, so it, it will be interesting in the discussions of the valuation of that, of what that value is. But I, I don't think that it can be based only on that, I think it has to be based on a whole bunch of other things and. I, I think your idea of, uh, you know, meaningful roundtable work session, work group, whatever we can have. To get a substantive group of people in the room together is, is really important, and look, the farming community. I mean, is, I think we realize that we, we, it's a situation where fairness will, will end up being what's right in the end. And I don't think there's any hesitation on the farming community to engage in that conversation, I just think right now the hesitation is. We don't really know the value of the water either, so right now it's just a pure, it's, it's just, we're just getting a bill in the mail. So the, the smaller that bill, the better off. For us right now. And there's no, there's no pushback on the administration fee, clearly it's a hassle. I mean, I understand, I've done water rights transfers, they're, they're really a hassle and they take a lot of time and they're costly, I get that. So that's really not the issue, it's just the ongoing charge precedent that we might be discussing here today. I just, uh, this is great, I appreciate, and one of the challenges of being a commissioner, of course, is that you, you get to watch us sound this out in real time, it's not like we get, we've talked. Much of you, but we don't actually get to sit down and, and, and go over some of the, the. Finer points of it. Before, before we get in the meeting.
No, and I do, I do appreciate, I mean. Your legal outlook on it, I mean, it really, it is important to have a value on the water as it's going by, I mean. Why hasn't this happened in a long time, I mean, I guess, as George said, the, the frequency in which these transfers are happening is becoming more frequent, so. The need ten years ago to address the value of the water going by wasn't necessarily there, now, now it is, but. I, I think again. Those, the true value is going to take. A lot to nail down and. A lot more than a consultant's, you know, however many hour review on rates and. And even jet, you know, even the consortium's overview, I mean, this is, this is the best we have right now, it's going to change. Probably twenty times moving forward, but. I just.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you and, and here's because I do think in absolute worst case scenarios, as I'm classically trained. My concern is we set it at ten, then Dr. Evil figures out that he can buy all of it for ten, we don't sell it to him for ten next year. Then we get dragged into this big long drawn out evil battle, you don't get water, we get sued, the water goes to sea, it becomes seawater and. And so you have to excuse the, this, the disaster.
Dollars, I mean, even at twenty, that could happen at twenty five, it could happen at fifty, it could happen at a hundred, it could happen at five.
Absolutely, right.
If you think of it, any dollar amount, you could have the same legal. Anybody who wanted to, Doc, not Dr. Evil, he'd come after you for any dollar amount. That, so the the concern will always be there, the fact that we did our due diligence and we had something that we based it off of. That is the legal precedent, I want to say.
Absolutely.
And.
Yeah, but we got there.
We don't, we got there.
Like, I think the. The challenge is finding the value of the water, everybody said that. It in whatever data set you can look at, whether it's ours or the consortiums. That's the value they determined it to be.
Sure.
I don't know if we'll ever get to a cost, we'll do, we could do a rate study. I think it'd be a real challenge, because we, you know, it's going to be hard to pick that apart, to find a cost, because it's just a. It's a avoided expense, the water is flowing down the river, how do you find the cost for that? And that's why the long-term idea is there.
With the market, let the market decide.
The market decides what it is, it could decide it's five dollars an acre foot.
Then, by it all, Jenna, do you have a comment?
Well, I'm back up here. I just wanted to reiterate that the 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 interlocals are a really big part of what we're talking about. And maybe there's a way to structure the interlocal to just make it really clear, these. These are, there are a lot of other extenuating circumstances that lead you to this price. So that it's not just Dr. Evil, he would have to be a District Fifteen Commissioner and he would have to vote with the. You know, there's, there's a lot of safety nets to protect this, what we're talking about. Um, and I just wanted to say that again for the sake of what we're talking about. It it isn't that you're just cutting a deal with with no other strings attached, there's, there's a lot of thought. Um, and and I I think no one wants someone to slide in and buy Skagit water and there's not. That's not the intention.
And the way we have the interlocal set up and structured, it's limited, right? This amount of, yes, this many days, that's it, it doesn't go into next year, it's, they expire, I guess is the point, so. Whatever. Amount is decided on is just for this year.
Yep.
It doesn't mean that it applies in at any year, any point in the future. You can use it to make a decision, but that doesn't mean it has to be buried.
And the eligibility, I agree, the biggest part for me is the eligibility. I mean, and not, we, especially this year, especially the the right now, which we're talking about, and that's why I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to talk about long term right now, because that's not the discussion we're having. We're having for this year, is our decision right now going to be defense defendable? And right now, we're talking about a drought, we're talking about an eligible uh. Eligible receiver recipient of a water transfer during an emergency declaration and. And I think all those things with with what we've been given by the irrigation districts, we have the administrative fee that. Will cover what the groundwork that we've been doing, and we're also, we're we're associating at a value, we're not. We're not getting rid of the fact, or ignoring the fact that the water does have value going past us. It it's all there, this piece of paper, it's all there to cover us for this year, for this emergency. That as of Monday, I would feel comfortable. As of Monday, if we went with this, would we, would we have something defendable? Or was it not, that piece of paper not defendable?
Well, I think it is, you can use it to defend you in the context we have, which is an emergency.
It's not, yep. And that's what I'm looking at right now. Moving forward, yes, do I think we need to have. A more substantial. Look at what the water is worth, absolutely, should we, as we are receiving payment, as we are. Dealing with the transfer, probably paying attention to how long it's taking us to do things and maybe coming up with a way to. To do this accounting in-house, yes, I do think that. Um. But again, I, those things take time, and I know that. The next year's water transfer, that may or may not happen, because I can't predict the future of droughts or. Low flows in the river, but. I I think we can have that conversation later, I just, I just want to cover us now, because I could, we could go back and forth talking about this. For months. But I think we need to have a short, short-term plan in September, and we need to have a short-term plan, meaning twenty twenty-four. And then during that twenty twenty-four, we should be having the discussion of what is a five-year going to look like. And that is going to take a year, maybe two, but. I I think we need to have a short, short, a short and a long-term plan. So, it'll be.
George, anything else?
Yeah, but um, so it's not that we don't trust any information here, because that's not the point. Um, but this is new information to us, if we were, if we're relying on information that's in this memo. It's not information that we retrieved. If I, I, without verifying it, I would feel. I wouldn't feel like it was a responsible thing to do, to just take it at face value. Again, it's it's phone calls that were made. We didn't make them, this is us having to defend this information. I feel like we need to be the ones verifying. It's, I think, and it's not, it's not a trust issue, it's us having to, anytime you take something from somebody, then it's yours. And you have to defend it. So that's a caveat I would have on this, and if that requires taking some time and checking the numbers and us being satisfied with it. Then that's what it might take.
Let me do some quick math, hold on.
The math is one thing, there's agencies on here that we haven't spoken to, we we don't know. I I don't know them, I don't know the number, I don't know um the people, I, and if I need to defend it. I want to have had that discussion.
So, I guess we could do pending verification, can I, can I make a motion? The. No, I I said the effect of which would be contingent on verification of the numbers. Is that, or procedurally, I don't even know, Pete's over like. And that's actually procedurally, so if it gets declared, it like, the best that we could do is get them water on the twenty-fourth, like. No, no draw on this water right until the twenty-fourth, and that's if the.
Until a drought is declared, not the twenty-fourth, it'd be based on a drought.
Being declared tomorrow. The right transfers on the twenty-fourth. So the very soonest we'd be able to.
No, I think the, the information is being given to the governor, I think the drought. Declaration would happen on the twenty-fourth, from what I understand.
Oh, I see, so pending declaration, that goes.
So the the interlocal that we drafted up. And the application to ecology are based on a drought being declared.
Right.
And so, based on Ria's email, I don't think the drought would be formally declared until the twenty-fourth.
If I'm reading. Yeah, we, we, right, we, we can't get too water before the twenty-fourth, no matter. We can't get this water. This right before the twenty-fourth.
It takes time to. It will take a, a little bit of time to put the interlocal together and put the application together, it, there's enough time to do that, for sure.
I, um, if I could chime in here, um. I, I mean, I I do like the idea of using real numbers, um, but I agree with George, let's verify the information first, so. Um, I mean, I'd be comfortable with what's been presented once, yeah, once it's verified.
So if I want to make a motion tonight, based on those numbers, Pete, how can I do it?
I think you could wait until.
They're verified.
Next week.
Mondays.
Or, I mean, I don't, I don't love the idea. Of an open. Price. Uh, and they won't either. But I mean, you could agree in theory to provide water and and uh pending verification of the price.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean towards, um.
We can say, though, we agree to provide water pending price, but based on the.
Verification of.
I would, I would say the methodology provided by. The drainage consortium within, you know. And if it's over two dollars different from what you came up with. Then we'd want to, you know. Redisess the dollar amount, or do we just vote on the dollar amount on Tuesday? Can we do that?
I mean, my recommendation would be to do with all.
Well, maybe, what's the order, right? So. What do you have to have done in order to turn the paperwork into ecology, so that they can process the change application? So it's in place, ready to go, so that the governor, he puts drought Monday, we can run down in the river and flip and switch. Bill will correct me if I'm wrong, the application.
And really, they, you could. Effect the change. And still hold off on granting permission for, till the interlocals to use it. So, again, we've talked about, we could be putting the application together this week, have everything ready, that's. It's a little bit of a lift, but. It'll come together pretty quick and. Then ecology, yes. They usually work pretty quick, it's going to be mostly a repeat of what's happened in the past. Can they do it in a day? Maybe, well, if you're doing what they're reading the Capitol Press, they can, yeah.
Without a drop.
Without a drop.
You can speak. Hi, good evening, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, um, this is Casey Cyclr with the Washington State Department of Ecology. Uh, I'm sorry, we lost your feed for a little bit, and I don't know if I was called upon or not.
Forward hearing your comments.
Great, thanks, I'm going to continue, and again, I apologize, the feed is being interrupted a bit, um. Uh, as I mentioned, I'm with the Department of Ecology, I am the Northwest Region Water Resources Section Manager. Um, and I just wanted to invite the P U D, should they decide to enter into an agreement. Um, with D I D fifteen and twenty-two. You know, as soon as you anticipate wanting to do that and come to terms with an agreement, we would welcome an application. Just as soon as you want to submit it, so that we can turn around. Um, and correspondingly, get this process as soon as possible for the farming community. So in other words, you know, if if you want to submit an application before the drought order is formally issued. We would accept that, be happy to do so.
Awesome.
That's great, thank you, Casey.
How long does that take to turn?
Uh, thank you, um, it's going to depend certainly on uh. The provisions of the agreement, if they are substantially similar to. Uh, the applications that have been submitted in years past, most recently twenty twenty-one. My team are standing by, um, and. Hoping to do this in a very short turnaround, um, given the emergency drought situation, so. Um, the the goal would be within a day or two, that's not normally what we're able to do. But I have directed my staff to prioritize this, understanding the emergency situation that's looming for this gadget.
Yeah, that's, thank, thank you, that's.
So, and that, that's why I want to take action tonight, to authorize the district to to get that started. And I also want to give us a. A week to figure out this, the, to verify those numbers, so I guess, I I would like to know, I mean. A motion room a bit to do that.
Maybe your question would be for Jenna, how long did it take Jenna to gather the information she has that way open forum? How you are thinking about it? Your opportunity to verify for somebody. Then we just have to come back in order to share the information, so I'd be next. Yeah, you could handle the, the application, we could move forward, get that. Submitted, which we had talked about already doing, the interlocal. Then allows people to pump.
Disinterested with the rate, the usage rate, that's really what.
Yeah, that's the focus of.
Yep, okay, Jenna?
Yeah, I know, thanks, um. I think, um, I would be happy to work with Bill to go through the methodology, so I I contacted each of these districts. Their units are really crazy, and so you're adding another mathematical equation. And so there are some assumptions built into how you calculate these numbers, you have to assume. Like in Eastern Washington, it's, it's a a set amount per acre, assuming three-foot application unlimited. So what's the growing season, it's not like. Nothing's clean, right? And this is another element of confusion, and so I think if you were. Rounding and saying ballpark, um, you would. You would get to about the same place, and we were fully transparent, um, but I just wanted to let you know, it's like they have an actual manual that says. You will play this much, um.
No, and a hundred percent, and I appreciate that George brought that up, because again, in an audit process.
Great.
So one of the things I think that to make the point is, this is sort of a fundamental question, is are you starting with the really high. Potable water ag rate, or are you starting with something comparable, as we can agree that we're starting with the methodology here. What's the base user rate, though, and I can work something out, um, if that's acceptable.
I second.
Drainage and improvement District Fifteen, if it's all of them, begging for the District Twenty-two. To provide a temporary water rights transfer during a declared drought for water resource inventory area three. Including an administrative fee of fifteen hundred dollars. Full stop. With a water rate to be determined. In a future.
July twenty.
Right, dead, to be determined and decided upon in our regular meeting of July twenty-fifth.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion passes, and so with that, we will move on to commissioner comments, any commissioner comments this evening?
Well, I just want to thank everybody, including our commissioners, for having such good discussion, and ecology for joining in our. Our conversation here too, that's just fabulous news, that even without drought declaration, we're only at one to two days. So, um, and again, yes, defensible numbers, making sure that all these are. Um, that we have citations and all that fun stuff, but I I think for me, the biggest premise is ensuring that we are, we're starting with a non potable portion. And I, I think that, I'm really glad that we got to the, today, and we'll talk about tomorrow, tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I'm excited to put this water to work, and in order to do that, we need to get the hands of people that are using it, and that's uh. Excited to do that, and I appreciate the uh the patience and and the ineligent process, but we'll get it dialed in and. The water where it needs to be.
And thanks, Joe, for chiming in while you're on vacation.
No worries. Well, yeah, I think it was a, I think it was a good discussion and, um. You know, obviously, we've got a lot more work ahead of us on this issue, but, um. I think this is a good starting point, so. Uh, with that, if there's no further comments, we will. Adjourn the meeting at five forty-one P M.